We'll call this meeting order for the March meeting in Detroit Lake City Council. Please stand and join me in the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the menu, here's the approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting on February 8th. Have you all had a chance to take a look at it unless there's any additions or corrections of the motion to approve as being presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. At this time, we'll move to the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted on with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on this unless a member or citizen requests that this item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately at this time for normal sequence agenda. What's your, is there a motion to approve as presented for the consent?
So moved.
Second. The second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. At this time, we have some people, the audience, we're going to call up first here. And the first one will go to item 5E, and that's for consideration to resolution 2022-0308F, approving a variance to allow 71-foot, 58-foot, and 50-foot setback to ordinary high watermark to allow additions to a home at 611 North Shore Drive, Candor Stephanie Goodrich. Larry, do you have this covered?
Yeah, basically, this is a request for a variance. They've requested several different setback variances, different additions to their home at 611 North Shore Drive. The reason that they need the variances is that their lot is in unusual shape, and it's also out on a peninsula on the lake, so if you take all of the setbacks that are required from the shoreline, they would have a very limited area where they could build. The planning commission reviewed this and recommends approval. The community development committee also reviewed this and recommends approval.
Okay, Steph, is there anything that you'd like to say at this time?
I don't think so.
Okay, Dan?
Yeah, so again, item E is consideration to resolution 2022-0308F, approving a variance to allow a 71-foot, 51-foot, 50-foot setback at the ordinary high watermark to allow additions to the home at 611 North Shore Drive. There were conditions on this to include Pelican River watershed review and approval of this site, and also there was, in the planning commission, they also included removal of a 1934 shed in this, and I so move.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any other discussion?
I do have something. I'm going to use a little bit of Robert's Rules of Order here, since the shed is a 1934 shed, and you know, typically, if you've got a structure there, I feel it's not something that we should require the removal of that shed in this piece, so I'm going to make an amendment to the motion to remove that stipulation of removing a 1934 shed from the property.
So then we need to vote on the amendment if you're amending your own motion.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment that Dan made then?
Do you want the second? Do you want to keep that bill in on there?
It's, I mean, it would be nice to have it. We can keep it.
I'll second it.
There's a second then, okay.
So, now that we got that, I've got some more discussion. So it wasn't part of the original proposal of the planning commission to remove this shed. It did come out through the planning commission process that there was conversation about the shed being too close to the property line, but again, this is North Shore Drive. This is a place that the house was built in 1934. The shed was basically built in 1934. I think it's bad precedent for us to tell the landowner that they have to remove a shed that's something as old as the property itself, so that's why I'm voting for this removal of that.
So, can I go, Larry? So, the shed is really within a foot of the property line, right?
That's correct.
Right, and there is actually some dispute that it might be over the property line, although the survey would indicate that it's not, but the shed will be integrated into the garage. If you look at the plan, the site plan, the garage goes right to the shed, and it gets integrated in there anyway, so you're going to end up with the garage way too close to the property line. It's 35 feet, square feet, it doesn't seem very big, so the planning commission thought in order to, you know, try to correct all that setback, the setback problem, and given the fact that we're making a lot of variance so they can increase the size of the garage, it made sense to actually require that the shed be moved. Both the property owner and the person that was requesting the shed be moved, basically said it really wasn't anything special to look at anyway, to say the least. Larry, do you want to?
Well, I wanted to, but you just said everything that I was going to say, so we're good.
See, I listen at these meetings, so yeah.
Yeah, I know you do.
Anyway, it seemed a good way to solve a problem. Are they already over impervious surface on that?
They are at 28% impervious surface coverage.
So, I mean, this doesn't, the shed doesn't make a huge difference on impervious surface, it's half a percent, but it would seem to make sense. It made sense to the planning commission to get rid of the shed as part of the whole redevelopment, if you will, of the property or remodeling of the house, and that's where we're at, so. And Dan and I disagreed.
Okay, well, there's a motion to make the amendment about the shed, so take a motion on the amendment. So, all in favor of the motion for amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It looks like your amendment didn't make it, so. No vote for the regular, the actual item itself, and item E, so you want to, we've got the motion on that, and then who seconded the?
I seconded the actual motion.
The actual motion, so we got a motion to second. So any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. While we're working with the community development, let's move on to item 5D, consideration to resolution 2022-0308F, approving a variance to not require four additional parking spaces to expand the marina from 36 slips to 50 slips at 2,000 Long Bridge Road, Hanson Properties, Long Bridge. Larry, do you want to go over that with us?
This is a request from Long Bridge to have a variance to not have to construct four additional parking spaces that would be required if they enlarge their marina from 36 slips to 50 slips. They currently have a license or a permit from the DNR for 36 slips, but on the ground, they actually have 60 slips in the marina, so while this is a request, because they're adding 14 additional slips, in reality, I know this sounds like a slick lawyer talking, but in reality, they are reducing this by 10 slips, so the reality on the ground is different than what they're technically asking for. But the planning commission reviewed this and recommended approval of the variance regarding the four parking spaces.
Okay.
I'll handle this when you're, Alderman Seaman. So, basically, CDC reviewed this and recommended approving the variance to not require four additional parking spaces to expand the marina from 36 slips to 50 at 2,000 Long Bridge Road, and I so move.
Second.
There's a second? There's a second? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
I'm going to jump in there, Dan, since I made the motion. Again, the 60 slips were put there by a previous owner, as I understand it.
Yeah, would you like me to give a brief?
Sure, well, let me, otherwise, I'll forget what I'm going to say, sorry. Anyway, so the previous, and Sam will correct all my misspeaks, but yeah, so actually, the 60 slips were there when the current owner bought it. They are being reduced down to 50. The ordinance that actually puts a requirement in place for a number of parking spots related to the number of slips wasn't put in place until 2019, but the marina's been there longer than that. But the bottom line for the planning commission was that adding four additional parking spots will expand the amount of impervious surface at this site, and in order to avoid that, they thought, we thought it better to not require the four additional parking spots and reduce the amount of impervious surface that's needed. With the reduction in the number of actual slips, if you want to put it this way, that should accommodate the need for, or help accommodate the reduced need for parking spots. So, Sam, if you want to add on to that, that'd be great.
Thank you. I think I've now been in every council meeting in 2022, so I don't know if I get an award or medal for that, but I'm doing what I can. And Dan kind of hit the nail on the head, this is a sort of a perfect storm of unique events that got us to this point. The marina, as it sits today, or at least last year when we didn't have ice on the lake, has been like that for, I think, about 22 years now, going back to Google Images, whatever you can see in 2000, it looked the same as it did today. And unbeknownst to the current owners, whenever that was put in back then by a previous owner or whoever put it in, built the marina the size that it's permitted for, in terms of length and width and all that sort of stuff, but just there's an extra spot for a boat in each slip, and so there's more boats than was permitted for, but the size hasn't changed. And so obviously, for 22 years, the parking has been what it's been, and what we're asking for here now is we're reducing the number of slips, so reducing the parking pressure on that existing spot, which therefore, you know, building more parking spaces for less use is kind of the end result that would be required otherwise. And so it's kind of lesser two evils of either it's more impervious surface or more parking spaces, and we figured since there's going to be less use, the better option is less impervious surface. There's been a lot of discussion at some of the prior committee meetings that I've been part of, about kind of some of the safety issues and the traffic issues and the parking issues that exist out there, and I certainly agree with all those things. This proposal won't make anything that sits out there today worse, should make it better because we're having less slips, and there's probably some other issues that need to be addressed with regards to the pressure that comes from, you know, the jumping off the bridge and parking on the other side and walking across, and I think there's been some discussion to have Public Works look at that and see if there's options for sidewalks or signage or something like that to make it better. That's kind of a separate issue than what we're actually here about, which is the parking with regards to the marina. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Cole Hanson's here from Long Bridge. If you have any questions for him, he's happy to answer as well, but thank you for your consideration.
Do you have any questions for Sam or Cole on this issue? Okay, Dan, did you have anything that you wanted?
Yeah, you know, this is something that live in that neighborhood over there, there's lots of people, there's lots of conversation every summer, there's lots of impact of that region over by Long Bridge of the parking, and, you know, bought the house 16 years ago, most of that development happened in the last 20 years, so it's not like the bar, restaurants side of things, the marina side of things, is anything that isn't known and wasn't known to the neighborhood there. The thing that has grown is the amount of parking and how it spills out of the existing parking lot. Yes, in 2019, the parking lot improvements were wonderful, the underground storage of the stormwater improvements made things a lot better, doesn't back up into the development any longer, it's just that the cars spilling out into the neighborhood going up Shorewood Drive, it is a safety hazard for everybody who travels Shorewood Drive to go up that hill. Most of the parking, since some of the neighbors on the north side of the road there have taken upon themselves to post that, please do not park in our yards, even though it's not their yards, city property. It is an impact because it narrows down things, and we've got pontoon on the south side of the road that they can't pull off to the edge. You've got kids, you've got bikers, you've got everybody using this area, so parking is an issue. The parking lot that we call parking lot, city parking lot, public parking lot, that's right of way, that's not a parking lot, it's not improved, it's something that is of benefit for the bridge, for the community, for Long Bridge, but nobody maintains it, nobody pays for it other than our tax dollars, than just general people going out there and plowing it themselves or doing whatever. So, anything that comes before this, you know, council or planning commissioner or whatever, we need to look at the parking situation. I get that we are, we're talking about removing or reducing or adding or whatever we are with the boat slips, and that has nothing to do with the conversation and my thought process here. 2015, the city council did approve not putting in two spots when the pizza kitchen or the exterior kitchen was put in, so we already reduced the number of parking spots on the property before the current owner took possession of this property. So, if we're saying we don't have to add four spots, that impacts our neighborhood, impacts our area, it impacts the south side of the lake coming through there, and I can't support the not requiring the four additional parking spots of this proposal.
Okay, any other discussion on this item?
Just one question, how many parking spots are in that lot right now? I know it's somewhere in here, but.
I think 70.
70, okay, thank you.
I would have to disagree with Dan, because I live in that neighborhood too, and I travel that hill every day multiple times, and I don't think the parking situation will get any worse, but also decreasing by 10 slips, I think that it may improve, but I know that it won't get any worse because it's already, there are already a lot of cars, but.
I lived on Shorewood Drive for eight years, it's never going to get any better over there. It is what it is, I agree with you Natalie, it is what it is, it's not going to get any better, and it's just like, I lived in that neighborhood, I knew what was down the road, I just lived with it, so. I don't, I think you're always going to have an issue down there regardless of how many parking spots you have, so.
I guess my question would be, where are the additional four going to go? I mean, where would they be constructed?
I don't think there's any plan for that at this point, you know, it's kind of cross that bridge and we come to it, but.
Well, I mean, it's kind of a rhetorical question because there's just not much room there, and I don't know where they find room for four more.
Yeah, and so that's, that's part of the discussion to be had at a later date if needed, I guess.
It's always, on that lake, it always seems like it's this impervious is always an issue on that lake, as far as being over 28%. And if the big thing is you're giving up four parking spots, you're providing more impervious there, it's better for the environment. I think no matter what you have, you're always going to have a parking issue over there, so if you lose, I don't think you're going to see as a big impact, Dan, in your neighborhood than you already see right now.
I think if we just don't do anything, it's going to keep on getting worse, and we've got the opportunity right now to say we want four more spots on that property to put cars where they're not parked on the road, and that's just kind of where I'm at. I see a lot of, a lot of stuff down there and a lot of parking issues.
Okay, anybody else with any discussion?
I have a question, actually, for Larry. So how, on any marina in town, because there's a few, how do you prevent the growth in the slips? How are we going to make sure on this or any marina, that when the parking and slips are related, how are you going to prevent this again?
Well, all of the marinas that are on the lake now are grandfathered in, so they don't have to provide any parking, but if they were going to expand, which technically this one is doing, but in reality it isn't, but if they were going to expand, then they would have to get approval from the DNR for that, and our only solution would be that they would have to provide the required parking, so.
But do we monitor it?
I do not monitor, I do not monitor marinas, that's the DNR's job.
Thanks. It seems like this has come up with another marina as well, if not more than one.
Okay, well, it looks like we've had the discussion from council, we've heard from the owner's representative, so I think it's time that we, we got a motion to second, so we go ahead and vote on this, so this is for consideration to resolution 2022-0308F, approving a variance to not require four additional parking spots to expand the marina of 36 slips, 50 slips at 2,000 Long Lake, Long Bridge Road, Hanson Property, Long Bridge. So, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for the time.
Okay, I'm going to go over to, I've got Jeff Staley here, item 7A, I told him I'd get him up right away, I've got to keep my words. That'll be few than Natalie.
So how do we want to do this item, the 7A, consideration to the memo from DMRA funding for the parking lot improvement? Kelsey, you kicked it off in finance, do you want to kick off?
Sure.
It again, or would you like Jeff to present first?
I can start, Vice Mayor and Council. In the packet, there's a memo that kind of outlines the request. Detroit Mountain through the city is looking at applying for another legacy grant. If you recall, a few years ago, a legacy grant was received to basically do a variety of improvements, including mountain bike trails, new playgrounds, some paving, signage, and some land acquisition. At that point, the city contributed in that project with $187,000 from the Food and Beverage Fund for the paving improvements as part of that project. Fast forward, not everything was accomplished through that first phase of the legacy grant application, so now we're looking at the next phase of legacy grant funding, so we're looking at a $1.65 million total project cost. Again, that's going to include some new mountain bike trails, lighted Nordic ski trails along with snowmaking, finishing off the treehouse and the natural play area, and again, some parking, paving of the parking lot near the trailhead. So the request from, the financial request is a $200,000 contribution from the food and beverage tax to fund that paving part of the project, with the $200,000 provided from the food and beverage tax fund, and then the other funds being generated from DMRA and other private contributions, you're looking at about a 25% local match for the legacy grant application. So with that, in the packet, there's really three things you'd be looking at approving or for consideration, let me get to those. There's a resolution that authorizes the grant application, there is a memorandum of agreement that's included, that also would be approved, and the third item would be consideration to the $200,000 request of food and beverage tax funds. So, I think we talked about it, the committee, to maybe do those all as one motion if council so wishes. So, with that, I'll defer to the councilor, Jeff.
Well, I don't know if there's anything left for Jeff to say. Would you have anything to add, because you kind of combined both of what you guys presented earlier today.
No, I'm available for questions for those that were not at the committee meeting, certainly, so.
Sure.
And this certainly qualifies for where we could use the food and beverage taxes for parking lots as well as for trails, and this definitely hits right on both of those spots, so I think we could probably have a motion on that, Natalie.
Okay, so the finance committee reviewed this earlier today, and I'm going to make motion for the consideration to a memo for DMRA funding for the parking lot improvement project in consideration to resolution 2022-0308I of support in matter of authorizing the application of legacy grant funding for the Detroit Mountain Recreation Area and approving the memorandum agreement in the amount of $200,000 from the food and beverage tax.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We've got a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. Who does the $200,000 go to? I mean, is it, how does that, it's our property.
That's correct, Vice Mayor and Council. The city is the fiscal host, so actually, the grant funds come to the city and all the disbursements come from the city, so basically, it's just the city spending the $200,000 for the paving portion of the project.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Then let's go to, we've got one more here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Let's go to item 5E.
All right, item 5E is consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance 488 resulting from B3 Auto Oriented Business District, LB, Lakefront Business District at 2359 Highway 10 West. Second reading, CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Got a second, got motion to second. Would you like to come up, make any comments on this, Craig, or?
I don't think so, unless you guys have questions.
Okay, any discussion on this? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go back, we have a public hearing, so I'm going to adjourn our regular meeting for a public hearing, and we're going to start out with item 4A, and this is a public hearing, to receive public comments on the proposed treaty, to clearly prove it for Long Pine Estates Phase 3. And who would like to, John, you want to give an update on that?
Certainly. Whoa. I'll try that. Vice Mayor and Council, we have a public hearing tonight relative to the Long Pine Estates Phase 3 project. If you recall, last month, we had the preliminary engineering report for this project and adopted that, so subsequently, here's where we're at. I have to turn it on. So, we're here to gain, or provide some information, getting any input from the public regarding the proposed project. It's also a requirement of state statute 429, anytime we're using special assessments to fund a portion of the project. So we'll go over the existing conditions, the proposed improvements, and estimated project cost assessments, and then time for questions and comments afterwards. Background and existing conditions, the developer, who's Nugget Investments in this case, petitioned the city for street utility improvements to what is the third and final phase of about a 60-lot subdivision. This third phase contains roughly 27 lots, there are an additional five lots that are out of this subdivision but adjacent to where we're making the improvements. Again, we adopted the preliminary engineering report for the third phase at the February council meeting. Existing infrastructure is sort of adjacent and next to most of the area that we're talking about, it's been done in two phases over the course of 2017 to 2020. All of that was done in mind of extending into these third, these phase three areas, particularly, a lot of the stormwater treatment basins have already been constructed and sized to handle this third phase area. So the proposed improvements are pretty straightforward, pretty standard, with our usual subdivision-type projects, we'll have an eight-inch PVC sewer main and manholes and service laterals, we don't need any lift stations, we can get all this via extension of gravity mains, so that's good news. Water main, we'll have six-inch water main, hydrants, isolation valves, water surfaces, and then that system would be looped back to existing water mains that are on adjacent areas of the third phase. So you can see a little bit here, the areas highlighted sort of in that orange color are the third phase, so we're sort of split between two areas kind of on the north end of the subdivision and then the south area of the subdivision. The green and the blue represent the sewer and water that we would put in as part of this project. Storm sewer, we'd extend storm sewer along a good chunk of the new streets. Treatment and rate control per watershed and city requirements and state requirements is pretty well in place, we may have to do a little bit of some stuff at one end of the street just to grab a couple of lots that we can't get back to one of the existing stormwater basins. Streets, standard 36-foot wide urban section, just like all of our subdivisions. So again, you can see a little bit here where we're going to extend, the red represents the storm sewer system, and you can see the street extensions there as well. So project costs, we're looking at a project cost of just under $1.5 million, the bulk of that, of course, is in the street at about $670,000, and stormwater kind of coming in from. seventy thousand, and stormwater kind of coming in second place at two hundred and seventy thousand. Proposed financing funded by the city and by special assessments in accordance with the city's assessment policy. The way that shakes out at this project is effectively all of the project cost, a hundred percent of it would be assessed, with the exception of the city picking up fifty percent of the storm sewer. Otherwise, it would all be assessable cost. So you apply that, that's what that looks like in the way of numbers. Results in the city picking up about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars with the balance of one million three hundred thousand going to assessments. I should note there, you can see it at the bottom, that that one million three hundred includes about two hundred thousand dollars of assessments that would be deferred to those five lots that are outside this development that I mentioned. So effectively, the city already has an agreement in place with that property owner. We would be sitting on those assessments, and they would be deferred until such time that that property would be subdivided and developed, so. It'd be distributed, again, according to our special assessment policy. In this case, it's pretty simple. We basically break out the different project cost categories, divide it by the number of lots, and come up with an assessment rate per lot for these cases. So like I said, we had twenty-seven lots in the subdivision. There's an additional five that would be deferred, giving us to that thirty-two lots. So you take all the costs that were assessable, assessable, divide it out, and you're coming up with an assessment of about forty-one thousand dollars per lot in this case. Terms, developer's gonna have prepaid twenty-five percent of the assessable cost prior to design. The balance would be assessed for a maximum of twenty years following the completion of the project, but the developer could request, and I suspect he will based on past projects, can request a five-year deferral followed by a fifteen-year term. We'll move this thing through. We're at the hearing here tonight. We'll need a couple months to get the design accomplished, probably look at, you know, bidding sometime around that June timeframe, which would mean construction probably would start sometime towards the later part of the summer with an assessment hearing later this fall. Question?
Any questions?
Yes. I move to order the preparation of plans and specs for the street and utility improvements for Long Pine Estates Phase Three. That's resolution two zero two two zero three zero eight A.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We'll continue with the public hearings and move on to item B, a public hearing to receive public comments on the changing of the ward boundaries. I'm gonna call on Larry to give us an update on both of those items, one and two.
Once we receive the two thousand twenty census information and the state has completed its redistricting, the city is required to renew its ward boundaries so that it has, all of the wards have proportional or proportionally equal population. So in this case, Ward One would have two thousand, excuse me, three thousand two hundred and fifty-five. The population of Ward Two would be thirty-three hundred and twenty-one, and Ward Three would be thirty-two ninety-three. So these districts are roughly proportional. We've had meetings with the county. They seem to be okay with the ward boundaries that we are proposing. And tonight, we would need to have first reading of the ordinance, amending our ward and precinct boundaries, and then also designating polling locations. Since we have to complete this by March twenty-ninth, there will probably need to be a special council meeting later this month to have the second reading of the ordinance.
Can I just might add that in two thousand ten, our population was eight thousand five hundred and sixty-nine, and this year's population shows that it's nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine, so we had some good growth there. So Madeline, do you have a motion there for us?
Yes, I move to give consideration to the first reading of ordinance four ninety, amending city code section two one two, ward and precinct boundaries. Can we combine them?
Just technically, we should have a public hearing.
You have to close it.
You should, you should, even though no one's here, you should at least ask for a public comment.
Okay. Is there, is there public comment as far as this?
Thank you, that's all.
No one here, sorry about that.
There is no public comment.
No public comment.
Okay, now, we shall give consideration to the first reading of ordinance four ninety, amending city code, section two one two, ward and precinct boundaries, and at the same time, we will also move to accept resolution two zero two two zero three zero eight B, designating the polling locations for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Got a motion to second that. I mentioned that the polling places are at Grace Luther, Trendy Luther, and First Luther, which we're all familiar with. So any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And now we'll go back to our regular meeting then. Okay, then Dan, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, item B, I'll turn over to Kelsey to give us some background on.
Vice Mayor and Council, in your packet is a proposed resolution. There's a template that was sent out from the League of Minnesota Cities that they were seeking support from cities to adopt this resolution. Basically, there's a variety of bills that have come up at the legislature that would basically curb local decision-making authority when it comes to planning and zoning and subdivision controls. Amended the resolution to include some specific language about House File thirty-two fifty-six that's been proposed, and some of the specific things that are part of that bill that would be problematic. I would recommend, basically, once adoption, we would provide this to the league for them to compile with the other resolutions, and then also is sent to our local reps.
So item B is consideration to resolution two zero two two dash zero three zero eight C, supporting lakes, or supporting housing and local decision-making authority. CDC reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next item.
Item C, Larry, you wanna give us a little background on item C?
You just had the report from John Pratt on the preliminary engineering for this project. So this is the Long Pine Estates second addition. It's the third and final phase, so we should be done with Long Pine Estates by the end of two thousand twenty-two. So this is the preliminary plat. If things go well tonight, they will probably submit their final plat, and you'll be looking at that at the April meeting. And if John wants to keep moving ahead with his schedule for the development, we need to go ahead and get these approved.
All right, item C is consideration to resolution two zero two two dash zero three zero eight D, approving the preliminary plat for Long Pine Estates Third Edition at eighteen eighty-four and eighteen eighty-five, Longview Drive. CDC reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
There's a motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Matt, do you have anything else tonight? Nope. Okay, you will move on to Public Works. Madeline, first off, we do have, we'll have an update on the new Public Works facility.
And we'll call on Kelsey.
Vice Mayor and Council, in the packet, there's some upgrade, updated information from the architect we requested. Three things from the architect over this last month. One is an updated architect agreement, since we never adopted one in two thousand eighteen, and that's an action item that we'll cover next. Also asked for an updated rendering of the proposed building, and then an updated cost estimate. So in your packet, there is a proposed site plan that hasn't changed. Basically, the size of the building, what's been proposed to build, where it's gonna go, hasn't changed. The rendering reflects a precast structure, which is something that was decided upon a couple of years ago when we were talking about design. One of the things to note is, don't be caught up too much on the coloring scheme. That's something that's subject to change due to design. Again, building layout is the same. Unfortunately, the one thing that isn't the same is the cost estimate. That has gone up considerably over the last couple of years. So right now, you know, we're looking at a total project cost of about nine point four million. So of course, that's gonna be something to consider going forward. The third item I mentioned, the architect agreement, the one in the packet is a few days old, that was from Friday. There should have been updated copies on the desk of the architect agreement, basically taking in the changes that we had requested. So I would ask the council to approve that architect agreement. The only thing that will be subject to change on that would be the structural engineer will likely change, so that'd be, I guess, to be determined. But everything else in the contract should be the same.
Public Works reviewed the architect agreement yesterday, and we moved to accept that agreement.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next item, Madeline.
Consideration to the second reading and adoption of ordinance four eighty-nine, amending city code section two oh four administration and section eight oh two parking regulations. We had the first reading last month. This does not take any action on who can get permits or where the permits can be allowed. This just allows permits. So the Public Works Committee reviewed it and moves to accept or to adopt ordinance four eighty-nine.
Second.
Got a second then. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next item.
Consideration to resolution two zero two two dash zero three zero eight G, approving the submission of a grant application for an all-inclusive docking system. And I'm gonna call on Sean King to just review with us what an all-inclusive docking system is and where it might be, because I thought it was very interesting, and I think we should know about it.
Council, yes, I have some drawings here. It is an all-inclusive docking system. Location is yet to be determined. We are looking at a couple locations down on the city beach. And what it is, it's a docking system for, it'll have a launch for a kayak, so someone in a wheelchair was able to roll up to the kayak launch, get themselves into the kayak and down into the water and back up safely. It'll also have a ramp, so they can get into pontoons. I know we have let's go fishing, so they can put this ramp down, wheel into the pontoons, and they can go fishing. It'll also have a swimming area. It'll be the water level in that swim area, and it's a little U shape that comes right off the dock. And it's generally about twenty-four to thirty inches of water, and the rails are four feet apart, so they can actually hold onto the rails while they go through this U shape to actually be able to go into the water.
Thanks, Sean. I just, I think it will make a really terrific addition to our waterfront to be able to offer that for people that need that kind of inclusive system. So I'm happy to see that, and Public Works would like to approve the submission of a grant application for that. Second.
There's a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Anything else on Madeline?
No, item D has been withdrawn. The DNR was at Public Works yesterday and ready to present this and had a conversation with our street director and discovered they could use his backyard. So they went through it. Item E, consideration to resolution two zero two two dash zero three zero eight H, ordering the preparation of plans and specs for the street and utility improvements for Westlake Drive. Now, this is from County Highway Six to the Falcon River, not the other big stretch, which is actually Project One on that Westlake Drive. John, I'll call on you if you need to tell us anything. Otherwise, we'll just make a motion.
Yeah, I don't think there's, unless there's any questions, I don't think I have any.
The only thing I'd clarify is the, the resolution is worded correctly. The agenda is not, so it's actually approving the plans and specs and ordering advertisement for bids. So just wanna clarify that.
So we're, we're going to be, we're going to approve the preparation of plans and specs and order bids, correct?
Plans and specs are done, so we're approving those, and we're ordering advertisement.
Approving the plans and specs and ordering something or other.
There you go.
That's okay, you can put it in, right?
Yes.
We all know what we're talking about here.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Last thing is calling on John, our city engineer, for his monthly project status report.
Vice Mayor and Council, a few things to update. Westlake Drive Phase One, which again, that is the segment from Legion Road to County Road Six, continue to make progress working with the county on resolving the various disputes there relative to the right-of-way and land acquisition, but we are making progress on that. Once we get through that, we still do have to work through some approval processes with MINDOT and things like that before we're gonna be able to go to bid. So I'm optimistic that we're gonna get there. When we'll be starting that project this summer, I'm a little bit fuzzy on right now. I think it's probably safe to say it won't be right away this spring, but, you know, perhaps by midsummer we can get started with it. So Westlake Drive Phase Two, I think we've probably covered most of that this evening, or we just ordered the, approved the plans and specs and authorized bidding. I do have some approvals to get through yet with MINDOT and some railroad permitting and things like that. So I don't know that we'll be back with bids in hand by the April meeting, but wanted the ability to go out for bids as soon as we get those approvals. So Berquist Subdivision, nothing to report, still in winter suspension there. Little work to clean up. Brisland Subdivision, I've not heard anything on that as of recently as to whether or not they're gonna move ahead or not. Willow, Holmes and Fraser Street, obviously it's still in suspension, but we're gonna be having a meeting with the contractor here in the next couple of weeks to start talking about, well, where are we gonna start and when, and things like that. So I'll probably have some more information on that project at the April meeting. Lake Forest, again, we still have a little bit of workhorse and an overlay on two seventieth to complete as soon as the weather allows. Highland Drive, we're working on that design right now in conjunction with Becker County. Probably twenty percent complete or so on that. So that project, in case anybody asks, I, again, don't think we'll be right out of the gate this spring with that, but by middle of the summer, hopefully we'd be getting going with some work out there. Long Pine Estates Phase Three, we had the hearing on that tonight, so probably be back in a couple months with plans to get those out to bid. And the Becker County Museum and DLCCC parking lot project, we authorized bids last month. We'll be opening those bids on Thursday of this week. Depending how that all comes in, potentially, we would add that to the special council meeting agenda later this month. So, questions?
Okay, thank you, John. You know, at this time, I'd like to say a big thank you to the Public Works Department, because we just finished here during February an unbelievable month, where we had a lot of stuff going on, and the Public Works employees did a great job helping the people be able to put on the Ice Castle, be able to put on the Polar Fest, for being able to go out and have a big fishing derby that Rotary had. It took a lot of, lot of help from city employees and a lot of help on that. And plus, I want to just say a big thank you, because this is our, this is the finishing of our one-hundred-fifty city anniversary. And, you know, we started out here last year later because we had the COVID, but we started out with all the sailboats, and we ended up with a, with a grand finale that you couldn't believe. It, you know, there were so many people down there, you almost thought it was July fourth, and it was, but it was in the wintertime for turnout. And without, all the businesses in town that we have that sponsored, that gave their end time and equipment, the people that gave actual dollars, plus the many, many hours of volunteers, this wouldn't happen. And, you know, Detroit Lakes really had a super lot of volunteers to make this. The way it is, it's just unbelievable to have a town of our size to turn out an ice palace, plus to go have with all these other Polar Fest events. And it was, we're talked about all over the area, and even somebody in California And it was, we're talked about all over the area, and even somebody in California had to call back and tell his friend, we heard the news story about your ice palace. So, it had far-reaching events. But I just want to say thanks to, to the Pub Works, and I think that utilities were involved with that, too. We had a lot of tree lighting and stuff, and it was just an overall great event. It couldn't have been done without lots and lots of volunteers, and we certainly had them. So, a big thanks to everybody that participated in any way. And if you didn't participate, just thanks for coming down and taking a look at all the work. It made those people know that their work paid off by having people turn out. So, I just want to say thank you for that. Now, let's move on to finance. And Madeline, what do you have for us here?
7B. We had Linda with the Patriot Assistance Dogs stop by Finance and present a request, charitable request. There is no action at this time. The next item, 7C is a resolution regarding ARPA funds, and Heidi, Heidi's over there to discuss.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. So, this evening, there is a resolution in your packet to elect the standard allowance available under the revenue loss provision of the American Rescue Act, or Rescue Plan Act. Basically, what this does is this allows the city to utilize our American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds toward revenue loss. So, we don't have to itemize what we're spending those funds on. We can use them toward revenue loss. And so, the federal government came out with a final rule about those funds and ruled that if you, if you so choose to use these funds in this way, you can basically write off up to $10 million worth of, worth of ARPA funds in this manner. And so, we felt it's a prudent thing to do. This kind of unties the strings of those funds and then allows us to be able to use those funds for any other public purpose that we'd otherwise be able to spend public funds on.
Okay, any questions for Heidi? Okay, Madeline?
Finance Committee reviewed. So, we motion to, I motion to the consideration to resolution 2022-0308J electing the standard allowance available under the revenue loss provision of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that this isn't just taking this and absorbing it into our general fund. It is going to be just, it gives us more flexibility to use on special projects, that, that it's not just going away. And I just want to make the public aware that it is, it is available for special projects that, that we need to decide on here and before 2024.
Correct, yes. We need to decide on how to spend the funds by the end of 24. Well, technically, this allows us to use the funds however we want to. So, we've already decided how we're spending the funds by this mechanism, but, yes.
Any other discussion? Anyway, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
7D. There's amended sponsorship agreement with Essentia for the arena, and I will call on Kelsey.
Vice Mayor and Council, the council approved a similar agreement to this last summer for some signage that Essentia was sponsoring. They've come back and requested to actually expand that agreement to include the Zamboni. So, if you remember, the original agreement was $25,000 a year for five years. This amended agreement that includes the Zamboni will include an extra $5,000 for those last four years of the contract. So, it'll be $30,000 a year for the last four years of the agreement for a total of $145,000.
So, Finance Committee reviewed, and I motion to the consideration to approving the amended sponsorship agreement with Essentia Health for the Kent Freeman Arena.
Second. We have motion, a second. Any discussion on this? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
One question I do have is, don't we have to act on item B? Because there was a request, and that wasn't retracted. So, we should either approve or deny that request?
It's, well, it's, it's not a zoning request. It's a request for a donation. So, I suppose you wouldn't necessarily have to deny it. But I think it's not a bad idea to be clear in your intentions.
Okay, would you like to make that motion, Madeline?
Sure. So, upon that discussion, the charitable request did not meet our public purpose test when we reviewed it. So, the Finance Committee recommends denial of the consideration to the request from Patriot Assistance Dogs.
Second.
You have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
So, we are on 7E.
Yes.
And this is, we had discussed these scanners before in a partnership with the museum and scanning in architectural plans and old newspapers and cleaning up some of those items. So, Finance Committee reviewed this, and I motion to the consideration to the memo from the city clerk to purchase a large format flatbed scanner from Marco Technologies for $5,944.72.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And then, item F is the facility plan update, and Kelsey has some updates for us.
Sure. Vice Mayor and Council, in your packet is basically this spreadsheet that I've been using just to kind of keep track of the different projects. It does look a lot like the city engineer update format.
I get a royalty check.
Yeah, you probably just get a commission off of that.
That's copying us again.
Right. So, I'll just kind of run through this. I won't spend too much time on it. The police department isn't a whole lot new there, other than just the remaining to-do item on that is the Subman Avenue project that is expected in 2023. The second item, the Public Works facility, I think we've already covered that. City Hall remodel, last month, the city council approved an architect agreement. We met with the architect a couple of weeks ago and had some feedback from staff about maybe a different office layout. So, we've asked the architect to look at doing a second option. I expect something within the next week to be able to review again with staff. Again, the goal there, and it's, the time goes by quickly, is still try to get this thing out to bid May is my goal. It's not too far away. But second item related to that, I'm kind of on a parallel track, is we've also been looking at the status of our HVAC equipment in the old PD, because of course, that is what we anticipate using as some temporary office space. So, we need to make sure we have functioning heating and air conditioning for us to be in there. Item 4, the Becker County Food Pantry. Just a reminder, or back up a little bit, there's been discussion about the site at this point. The food pantry has identified the preferred site on Terry Street on a parcel of land that the Development Authority is going to be acquiring. We refer to as the Cleveland Farm off of Terry Street. Right now, they're looking at a total project budget of about $923,000. Kind of the funding plan was shaping up to be a request to the county of $250,000 of ARPA funds, $250,000 from the city of ARPA funds, and then also asking all the different townships in the county with the hope of generating another $250,000 towards that $923,000 goal. Kind of where we're at is we're waiting for the county to make a decision on their funding. And the other action item I have is I think we're going to have to have another meeting with the county and food pantry at some point just to make sure everyone's on the same page about who's going to own the building and then how the ongoing operations are going to be funded. South Shore Park, not much new there until spring. There'll be plantings done, and the donor recognition will go up in the spring. Washington Park, there's been some activity there. As I mentioned before, there, our request is included in the governor's bonding bill for just under 1.2 million. We've also heard from the House that if they were, if we were part of the, their bonding tour, we will not need to testify. So, that's a good sign. I guess the wild card is whether or not we'll be in the Senate bill or not, and then, of course, whether or not we'll have to testify at the Senate hearing. The other action item is the soil borings were completed in the infield. That report's being reviewed by our turf vendors to figure out, you know, what the feasibility is of doing turf and what that cost would be. And our architect has also had communications with the state historical and preservation office, because again, that's on the historical register. There's a process we got to follow. We got to submit basically all of our plans to show them what we want to do. And then, there's a 30-day comment period for them to review our plans, and then we'll have to address their comments. So, that's kind of where we're at. That's, the architect's kind of putting that package together. We should have a meeting. I'd like to have a meeting at some point with that committee again, but at this point, we'll probably wait until we get some response from shipboard. Pavilion, really nothing new to report there. Really hasn't anything of note. Items kind of 8 and 12, again, not a lot of movement on those projects, other than just some ongoing discussions with the fair board about site plan, looking at some different site plan options for that entire, kind of that whole 25-acre site. But nothing, no decisions to be made yet on that. Airport has been, few action items, things are still going on there. First, the hangar project, item number 10. If you've driven by, the hangar's up. It's steel is up. The contractor's working on thawing the ground. Should be doing that kind of here this, this month, thawing the ground and getting it prepped for concrete. Item 9, basically working on our next grant application, our FAA grant application and state grant application. And the goal for the next, kind of the next construction season here is a new fueling station for the airport. That fueling station is 30 years old. The new fueling station would be with above-ground tanks, new feeling, filling area, and a new part of that project require repaving the parking lot. So, that is, that's due on the 11th. So, we're trying to process that application, and more discussion on that to follow. The community center, basically, construction has started on that. Demolition has started. They hope to have that completed hopefully in May. The balcony seating, I understand, is going to take a while for those to come in. So, you're looking at that being completed later in the summer. I think we've covered number 13. The Heartland Trail is included in the bonding bill. There's actually two items that are in the bonding bill. One is additional funding of $500,000 to complete the trail of Phrasee. And also, we need a, there's a language correction in the, from the 2020 bill that we need. It's just a language glitch that came out. So, we're, that's part of the correction. Cover number 15, that bid opening for the parking lot is Thursday. And then, the last thing is the library was looking at doing some bathroom remodeling. The architect finished those plans, and those are out for getting quotes. So, maybe in April, we'll have quotes for the council to review. Any questions?
Okay, thanks, Council, for that update. And.
I have a question.
Kate, question?
So, I, I serve on the food pantry board for the city. This has been kind of, this discussion has been going on for, for quite a while. And, you know, I think the present project involves selling a lot and the, and the proposed new industrial park to the food pantry plus a city donation. You know, because it is an all-volunteer group of people, it's, you know, they're not accustomed to dealing with these long government projects. Is there any concern by the council or comments or anything that, you know, you would want to share? Or is this thing still just kind of, I really, I'm not asking you to vote. I'm just kind of asking for what the response of the council is, if any, if any.
I've, I've been working with the food pantry as a council member for over eight years to replace that building. And it's, it's called the Becker County Food Pantry. And, you know, it's not just people in the trail lakes, but actually, the majority of the people that use that pantry come from outside the city limits. And we're, we're hoping that the, that the county will step up and help us with this to get, to get this project done, because that facility that they're in right now is, first of all, is too small, but it's in such poor condition. They don't have the proper equipment for refrigeration and storage. It's just, it just needs to be replaced. And we're hoping that they have ARPA money like we have, and we're, like Kelsey was saying, we're hoping that they'll, they'll come up and help us and make this a true joint effort between the county and the city for the food pantry, because it helps, it has a big helpful need area. And a lot of those people are outside the city limits. And so, we're, we're, we're hoping that this time, and we've got a great board over there for the food pantry, and we're just hoping that the, that the county will come up and help us so we can get this thing to the finish line. And we've got a great location there on Terry Street, and it's just that we're, and we, and the city's got a, we're, we're set to do our share of it. So, we're just hoping that the, and the county's working on them, too, so to be fair with them, too. So, we're hoping that we can get together in the very, very near future, them along with the board from the food pantry and, and get this thing down to the home stretch. But it's, no, it is a concern, but waiting and waiting and not getting any place with it. But I, I really do think, I feel like we're getting closer, and I, I hope I'm right on it.
Is that what you're looking for, Jamie? I mean, are you looking for?
I know, just a feel, just any, anything that is positive or negative.
That the council is.
Still with us after this time?
I mean.
And I, and I think this is a great indicator, but I just want to hear.
And I know the county is, is, they're, I talked to Grimsley, and they're, and Oakerson, they're, they're definitely aware of it, because they've been over there and had a couple of open houses there. So, they, they know the situation.
Yeah, it just sounds like they're a little bogged down in paperwork. The county is.
Yep, that'd be a good statement.
But I, I think people should know that those are the kinds of things that we're looking at for ARPA money, is to go to benefit large, a large number of people who really do need that help.
That's right. Any other questions?
If not, we have one last item on the finance agenda, and that's 7G, and that's Heidi. The comparison on the revision.
Yes, so item 7G is a consideration to approve budget revision for the lodging tax and tourism fund. This was purely an oversight on my part when we were putting together the 2022 budget. I didn't incorporate the Tourism Bureau's final approved budget that they had set forth to me in our final budget that the council adopted in December. And so, I would like to remedy that and have the council revise their budget so that they're working off of the budget that they intended to.
So, with that, finance reviewed, and I motion to the consideration to approve a 2022 lodging tax tourism budget revision.
Second. This motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, then we move over to public safety. Dan, do you have anything else?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, all right. And then, the next item is the liquor gambling committee. Do they, who's representing this? Do they have anything that they want to bring up this time?
Jamie?
Oh, no.
Nothing at this time?
Nothing on the agenda.
Early specials at the liquor store on Tuesday nights?
Thanks for keeping me on track here.
Pernell, do you have anything that you want to bring up of your public utilities?
No, sir.
Okay. I just want to mention that last Wednesday, Kelsey and I were down at St. Paul for College Minnesota City Legislative Priority Action Week, where we met with our local legislators, people along with just about every town from, there's hundreds-plus towns from outstate that came in. And because outstates certainly has different ideas of, to help that we need compared to what they have in the metro. But we had a list of things, and fortunately for us, we're ahead of some of the stuff. One of the big items is still wastewater and drinking water. And I'm so happy that we got, we've got a new facility, because a lot of people, they're, they're waiting to get something done, and we're, we're ahead of that. But of course, the big thing is, they were talking about local government aid, and the childcare is still a big, big talking item. Like I said, you can't have economic development. Like I said, you can't have economic development in your city without good childcare facilities. You know, you want people to come, you need a place for these people to have their children to go to, so that's a, it's a big issue, so we'll see what kind of help we'll get from both federal and state down there. And plus, we talked about affordable housing a lot and they also talked a lot about annexation and the two mile zone and everything else, so it was, but overall, it was a, it was a good, good meeting and find out that we have this $9.25 billion surplus in the state. So we've got, we do have money, so to see that, so I just want to bring that up. So, Kelsey, do you have anything that you'd like to bring up at all?
No, Vice Mayor, a good report from our trip. I sent out a administrator update too about that LGA proposal. I think that'll be something we'll be watching here over the next couple of months if that gets traction or not, so. And then I think you, you'll probably mention it to, for the joint governance meeting, the chambers hosting that, we did have a conversation about trying to get a couple of speakers to talk about childcare. That came up at the last joint governance meeting, so thought it'd be a nice way to continue that conversation, have a couple of people speak on that, so.
Kate, Carrie, do you have anything else you want to bring up?
Just if you plan to go to the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference in Duluth on June 22nd through the 24th, please let me know so we can get the hotel situation figured out because as you all know, Duluth in June is busy.
Kate, Larry, do you have anything?
Nothing else.
Tom? Heidi? Kate, Aaron?
No, I'm good.
Dan?
The only thing is, I'd like to encourage everybody to kind of look at that Long Bridge area and I know we've talked about it, I know the planning commission talked about whether it's crosswalks, whether it's safety issues, whether it's jumping off the bridge, it's all came up last night, it came up at the planning commission meeting last week. I think it's something that we do need to take a look at, safety wise down there, so that's what I would encourage us to look at.
Thank you. Amanda?
Nothing.
Kate, nothing? Jamie?
Nothing.
Nothing further.
Well, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, attendees.